All board members are in attendance with the exception of Mr. Boglioli. If his plane was on schedule, he will be here shortly. Does anybody have any announcements before I get going? I have two just to share. At the June 6th Erie County Association of School Boards Awards Dinner, annual dinner celebration coming up here, two board members are getting honored for their service. Don Snyder is receiving the Medallion Star Award and Tricia Andrews, the Rising Star Award. So congratulations for your service. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening? Do you have a second? All those in favor? We have in our packet minutes from the Board of Ed session on April 15th, including executive session as well as the special board meeting on April 16th for the Erie One Bosie's Budget Vote. If there's no questions, can I get a motion to approve those?
Some of them.
All those in favor? We have no correspondence to note at this time. Brings us to the first of two public comment sessions for this evening. If anybody has anything at this point in time, there's two microphones. Again, there'll be one later on. Thank you. Any unfinished business? Dr. Hicks, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuchs. We have three items during the superintendent's report. First and foremost, we're here to celebrate our state champion rifle team under the direction of their coach, Bob Newbauer. So Bob, we're going to turn it over to you. We have some certificates for the kids. If you can tell us a little bit about the season and introduce the team, please.
For the last two years, the rifle team has been competing in air rifle competition only. Two years ago, I believe it was, the state discontinued the small bore competition and substituted the three-position small bore competition at the state level with three-position air rifle. So actually, in our league, we have two competitions we compete in. Generally speaking, the first competition is what we call 30-Shots Standing where they shoot three of those targets. They have one hour to do such, and they get a score, each target worth 100 points. Each one of the bozies, other than the two in the middle that is, counting as 10 points each. You can see by looking at the targets that the actual bozai itself is that tiny little dot that you may actually have to get very close to see. It's actually smaller than the period at the end of a type sentence. It's that tiny. And if you take a look at some of the targets from some of the kids that I just pulled off the wall here quickly before I came in here tonight, you can see why we basically nickname ourselves Precision Paper Crunchers. We are shooting at 10 meters, which is approximately 33 feet. And if you look at those targets, you can see how incredibly accurate these kids are. The 30-Shots Standing is the one competition. That is the competition we actually went to the state championships for this year. The other competition is three-position. In three-position, they shoot one target in the prone position, one target in the standing position, and one target in the kneeling position, each once again worth 100 points for a total of 300 points. So that's the competitions we're in. So as far as the league goes, you can win one of those competitions, you could win both of those competitions, or of course, you could win none of those competitions as it goes. Section Six is, I believe, the largest section in the state in terms of number of schools that participate in this. And we have been growing. We've been adding some schools. A couple of years ago, the last one that was added was Pioneer. Before that, it was Holland. And then there's the other traditional ones that have been there right along. I'd like to end, basically, we had 20 kids on the team this year, and what we have here tonight are five of the kids that went to the state championship, plus I believe, unless somebody walked in late on me, three of the other kids from the team, from, you know, of the 20 total kids that were on the team. So I'll just basically introduce the three kids that were on the team that were not on the state team. We have Ryan Myers, who's an 11th grader right there. He's a third-year shooter. We have Tom Pollack right there in the gray. He also is a third-year shooter, a junior, okay? And we have Jacob Getz, who was a 9th grader this year and a first-year shooter. It would be Jacob back here. I'm going to focus most of my comments on the five that were on the state team this year. What happens is when you go to sections, you have to qualify for sectionals, both as a team as as individuals. I pick the five kids that are going to be on the team, and then the top four scores count towards the actual school or sectional score. So then, if we have the highest sectional score, then you move on to the state championship, and I'll explain a little bit more about that there. Now, I'm going to introduce the team, just basically going from freshmen to the seniors. The team this year was a young team. In fact, four of the five shooters that won the state championship are going to be back on the team next year. We start off with Adam Ferolino, 9th grader, first-year shooter. Adam is a remarkable first-year shooter. To make the sectionals to begin with as a freshman, let alone make the team in the schools such as Clarence at sectionals is even more incredible. And then to actually be on the state team and be a part of the state championship team is truly amazing. He's also qualified for the Junior Olympics. He was out in Colorado just a few weeks ago, shooting in national competition, and actually ran into and spoke with a former Clarence shooter and an Olympian, Bob Folt, who was there. Next, we have a sophomore, Wyatt Bellinger. Wyatt is a second-year shooter. He was our Most Improved Shooter this year. His scores went up very significantly, and he was on the state team as well. Then we have a junior, Alexis Kirk. Now Alexis is actually a fourth-year shooter because she came out when she was in 8th grade. And last year Alexis was the state champion at the West Point match. She also was the league champion this year with her average in the 30-Shots Standing competition. Then we have Mike D'Abbo, junior again, and a third-year shooter. Mike also, by the way, Alexis is also part of the Junior Olympics, and Michael was a part of the Junior Olympics. So we had three shooters go out to national competition, and we're talking about the top 10 or so percent of the shooters in the country they're competing with at this particular point. They are that good. And then lastly on the team are senior Emily Gay. Emily is a second-year shooter. Interestingly enough, she came out the spring of her sophomore year, came down the club, and she said, "I'd like to try this out and see what this is like, and I'm thinking about going off the team next year now." I had no idea what year she was or what have you, and I said, "Well, what grade are you going into? I'm going to be a junior next year." "Oh, okay. Well, we'll give it a try," I said, "because if it takes a long time to learn this sport and get good at it." Well, this is the classic, you can't tell the book by its cover for sure, because she is a second-year shooter and she is the New York State, new New York State champion this year. She led the team both at sectionals, and we'll talk a bit more about her scores, and at the state level at that point. She will be attending the United States Military Academy at West Point next year. So when she was there shooting at the state championship, she was actually trying, now competing for Clarence and for Section Six for the state championship, she was in essence trying out for the West Point team next year. And as you can probably guess, it was a good tryout. She had a very good day, okay? So that's the team that we have this year. Let's see. Recapping the season, we were 13-1. We had one loss to Lancaster in the three-position competition during the league. We were 7-0 in the 30-shot. We set a new ECIC record during the season with 1130 out of a possible 1,200 at that point, and our average was 1119. We were in first place, but actually, interestingly enough, in terms of average, we were in third place. Lancaster and Pioneer were slightly ahead of us. But then at sectionals, the kids came through and they shot 1122, and we were very pleased. Obviously, they shot above their average. And next thing we find out, Lancaster shot 1122 there as well. So then it comes down to the tiebreaker, and in the case of the tiebreaker, we won it. So we became the sectional team going to the West Point at that point. At that particular match, Emily shot, let's see here. I'm trying to think here. She actually at sectionals, set two sectional records. She set the first sectional record in the standing position with a 98 six-center target, and she shot a 292 17 centers in the 3P aggregate at that point. In terms of 30-shots, she was in second place that day with a 290 14 centers. So what happens is we get all these numbers running around our heads, and we're sometimes getting confused, and I just wanted to double-check the things we're doing here. During the season, Emily, we were going to Holland. If you're familiar with Holland, it's a long bus ride, and it was, the weather was not so, all that terrific either at that point as I remember. And we got there, and she came up to me. She says, "Can I make a phone call, Coach?" And I said, "Yeah, sure." She says, "I got to call Chris Collins." And I said, "The Chris Collins?" She says, "Yeah." I said, "Well, absolutely." So she goes off, she shows, calls Chris Collins. Chris Collins notified her personally of her acceptance to the United States Military Academy at West Point, and that night she set a new ECIC record in the kneeling position with a target of 108 centers. She was two centers off of an absolutely perfect target. Now, a center is when you take that dot out completely. If you touch it, it's a bozai, but if you take it out completely, you can't see it, it counts as a center. So she basically hit that target, bozies all 10 times, and eight of those 10 times were perfect centers in that, at that particular point. So she had a very good night that night, and I appreciate Chris Collins making that call for us because she certainly helped our score at that particular point. Let's see. Just to move along here in that legal thing, Alexis this year was our number one with her average in 30-Shots Standing. Her average was 284 out of the possible 300 over seven matches. Now at states, at West Point, we went there on March 2nd, 2019. Clarence has had a team at the state championship now every year since, either a team or an individual at the state championship every year since the year 2004. We've gone there, made 16 trips to West Point on that weekend. Up until the last two years, it was by school bus. I remember every one of those trips, like it was yesterday, bouncing down Route 17 in the school bus, an Alden school bus generally speaking. The last couple of years, we were fortunate enough to actually have a coach to go there. We got there, we shot 1136 with 37 centers. Now, that actually was just two points shy of the state record. We were that close to breaking the state record. These scores these kids are shooting, if you were to look at the collegiate level, now the collegiate level is going to be double this because they shoot, instead of three targets, they shoot six targets, but they are shooting at Division One collegiate level. They are, I mean, when you're in the 290s, unless you can get is a 300, there's not much room for improvement, needless to say. And we jumped 14 points from our sectional score at states. So here we were in the biggest match of our lives, and they were just cool, common, collected, and they shot 14 points higher than they did at sectionals, six points higher than what the ECIC record was that day. Obviously, we now have a new school record of 1136. Emily was number one. She shot a 291 14 centers, one point higher than what she shot at sectionals. Alexis, 284, two points higher than what she did at sectionals. Wyatt, a 281, six points higher than what he did at sectionals. Mike, a 280, six points higher than sectionals. And Adam was a 281, six points higher than sectionals. Now, when we go to West Point, we have to pick the four ahead of time. Five go, we have to pick the four ahead of time. So I picked Adam to be our fifth shooter, and as you can guess, he actually shot one point higher than our fourth shooter. But he was our freshman, he was our first-year shooter, and I thought he would probably be the most nervous of anyone under the circumstances. I was wrong, as I more often times have been, okay? So Emily Gay becomes the New York State Champion in 30-Shots Standing with a 291 score. So, thank you very much.
Okay, congratulations to Emily and to our entire rifle team. What we will do is we'll pause slightly. You can stick around for the budget hearing and the committee report, but if you guys have exams or anything else like that tomorrow and you need to leave, we will pause here for a second to allow that to occur. No hard feelings.
Congratulations. 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 Okay. Mr. Fuchs, next is the mandatory budget hearing notice presented by Mr. Mancuso.
Thank you. Thank you. As you know, as Dr. Hicks just mentioned, this is a requirement at this time, but it's certainly after we've had a lot of budget input. So I will be brief. Board of Education and the budget administration have a budget process that's ongoing. There were over six public input sessions before the board adopted the proposed budget in April. Board of Education sets goals for administration. Basic two goals were to protect and enhance the core values and programs and opportunities of the district, and the second one was certainly to be fiscally responsible and remain tax levy, that is, at or below the tax cap. Expense budget is in three components as required by New York State. The instruction component is the instruction, transportation for all of our students, special education and regular education, and over 50 schools, private placements in our own schools. The increases here are basically for contractual wage increases. The capital section is the Billings and Grounds Department takes care of over 900,000 square feet and over 200 acres. Administration is the administrative cost for all the schools and the district office. This is a snapshot of the three-component budget, and the only addition to this budget from last year's rollover would be the addition of one behavioral specialist. The flip side to the expense budget, the revenue budget, is here, and New York State aid does have a minimal increase, and the tax levy is at a 3.2% increase, which is just below the tax cap. 3.2% requires a simple majority approval, and the 3.2% levy increase, our best estimate equates to a 2% increase for each individual homeowner. In addition to the budget, there'll be a bus proposition. Nine buses for $940,000. Our fleet is 97 vehicles. Our buses usually last between nine and 13 years. We do get reimbursed from New York State, two out of every $3 at least for all the bus purchases. As you can see, we get state-of-the-art buses, and our annual replacement plan, we certainly think makes sense to take approximately a tenth of our fleet every year, and the ongoing process like that keeps the tax levy and tax cap stable. We have two Board of Education seats up, Mr. Boglioli, and a seat currently occupied by Mrs. Claus, and we do have two candidates, Mr. Boglioli and Mary Beth Sweeney. Last thing, just how are we doing financially-wise? Well, we are in the top five for the three main categories that relate to finance: cost-effectiveness, administrative efficiency, and the top five for the lowest average spending. The budget vote is May 21st, right here at the high school, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. That's it. Any questions? Anybody have any questions?
Just to clarify for the vote, I know in the past, or in the last few years, we've expanded the parking out back and really have had ample parking during the day. Is that still the case?
Yes, we do. We take, it's about 80 or 90 spots, closest ones right to the gym entrance, and we, you know, we pull the students out of that and we rope it off. So there should be plenty of parking spots. We still do have the shuttle from the town library if anybody needs that, and the only time the shuttle doesn't run is the two, the morning pickup and the afternoon drop-off period of time.
Thank you.
Actually, it occurs to me, now that we've got assigned spots for the students...
No, we don't.
We've got assigned, yeah, we took...
Sorry. I was completely out of...
Never mind. Yeah, she...
The students would like us.
I had to graduate them. Where else?
Any other questions? We will have a little bit of a parking issue during the all elementary track meet, but we'll, our guys will work hard to make sure that everybody who needs to vote during that time can come on in and vote.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Last thing on the superintendent's report. We started our facilities committee three months ago. We had a great group of community members, administrators, teachers, support staff who were part of that committee. We have Jason Lotti and Chris Brophy from the committee here as community members to help us with the presentation. Our plan is to present these recommendations to the board tonight, take any questions and any research that the board needs us to do over the next month, and then hopefully have the board approve a project in, at the January meeting.
July.
Or I'm sorry, July meeting. So that's a tight timeline, but it does, it will provide enough time for the board to take a good, serious look at things. And if you don't have, if you can't think of any questions tonight, you can just email us, and we will get you all the information that you need. So Rick, I'm going to turn it over to you.
As Dr. Hicks mentioned, Jason Lotti and Chris Brophy are here, Brian Logal and Keith Hrluski, all members of the committee. So we will tag-team this presentation. I'll start off. This is the list of the 13 members on the committee. We called them the big guns, as you could see. The board appointed the committee to examine the capital needs of the district, recommend the scope of a potential project, recommend the size of a project, and recommend the timing of the project. In general, the committee met from February through April. They reviewed the Building Condition Survey, which is a document prepared every five years that goes through literally every nook and cranny of the entire district. The committee reviewed all the debt service schedules of the district and how the capital investment is partly paid through by New York State. The committee debated and discussed and came to general consensus regarding a recommendation to the board. In the binders that you have, you will see several things. In there, there's going to be the Building Condition Survey. There's going to be a prioritized list from the committee of items to, that they're recommending to be included in the project, plus a lot of debt service, and also items that the committee deliberated on but might not have wanted to be included. I'm going to hand it over to Chris. Yep.
So I have the easy part. I have the part that we were in consensus. So, and you'll see through the pictures that Brian gave us. Is that not... Oh, there. That's right. Okay. What you're not going to see, that what we don't have pictures of here, is the massive amount of painting throughout the district that needs to be done, especially at the bus garage. The bus garage was originally purchased by a contractor for his business, not for use of 100 buses going back and forth every day. So that needs a full tear-out and rebuild, and what's great is doing it at this time. We'll get the maximum amount of New York State aid possible for that project. We all agreed that there was a lot of masonry work that needed to be done throughout the district. You can see, you know, the cracks in the wall, and that by repointing and refacing these walls, it'll prevent leaks which could harbor mold and also provide better climate control and safety. Other masonry work that needed to be done, these are the steps at Clarence Center. There's many buildings, steps throughout the district will have some of this because of the weather taking a toll on the stairs. Once again, we have to address the flooring throughout the district. We're going, Brian's going to be taking a long-term approach to this, this time. You can see where the flooring underneath is coming up through it because they just paved over in the past. So he'll be taking a better long-term approach. This work was done before Brian was on board. Outside, the lights, pylons, many of them are cracked, and while they're doing, they do safety inspections on those, many of them are going to need repairing or replacing, and doing it outside of a project such as this would be much more costly than, and would not receive the New York State aid. This is also with going under the state aid. Why is this not working for me? Thank you. It's also an ideal opportunity to update old facades. A few of the areas from the 50s and 60s are just outdated and really should be updated, and it's a perfect opportunity to do it. Also, many of the rooftop HVAC units are past or approaching their end of life. I believe 30 out of the 80, there's 80 district-wide, oh, that's the next one, 80 district-wide, and at least 30 of them should be considered for replacement at this time. Also, in the last capital project, we did a lot of updating of roofing. There's over 800,000 square feet of roofs in the district, and we have a chartered schedule for the useful life, approximately 100,000 square feet of it should be included in this project.
How much of the roofing did we do in the last project versus this one?
We did more, about $40,000 square feet more.
There are three additional items that the committee came to consensus on, to a general consensus, and that included the Family Support Center. Our FSC is off to a great start, and with, we all felt that mental health taken, is important to take a forefront in societal issues. Having an appropriate and truly confidential area that can grow as needs arise is paramount. And the committee felt that having a private entrance and more, knowing that people could come there with more privacy, but also it was mentioned by some on the committee... There are three additional items that the committee came to consensus on, to a general consensus, and that included the family support center. Our FSC is off to a great start, and with, we all felt that mental health taken, is important to take a forefront in societal issues. Having a, having an appropriate and truly confidential area that can grow as needs arise is paramount. And the committee felt that having a private entrance and more, knowing that people could come there with more privacy, but also it was mentioned by some on the committee, by doing something like this, we're showing that mental health is important to the district. Also, for the music and the arts area, and that's where I appreciate, I was able to get on to this because I asked a couple of board members if this was represented, and so I really appreciate that they went out there and asked to make sure that that was, that that happened. Our high school auditorium needs some upgrades, the rigging system, the catwalks, the stage floor, building a permanent extension on that. Also, at the middle school, doing some acoustic panels. There, a lot of work was done before in the middle school, but putting in some acoustic panels and putting in some soundproofing, updating, tearing out and updating the chorus room. And there's no soundproofing between the chorus room and where some of the students are having lessons in Mr. Stroth's office, so having that done. And lastly, was doing, we're talking about security and the security entrances, which Jason will touch on later. We could, we didn't come to a consensus on that, but we did come to a consensus on thinking that window film, that would be shatterproof or shatter-resistant at the entrances of all the buildings, was something that we agreed should happen.
Do we wanna just pause for a second on the things that did reach consensus? If the board has any questions for Chris or Jason or Rick or any of the other committee members that are here? Or do you wanna just jump right in and keep going?
I have some questions, I think, as opposed to getting further along.
Sure.
So the family support center, the dedicated space, I'm just looking through. Did we talk about, the committee talk about where would be an ideal space or just the fact that we need to?
Could I, Brian, can I explain the best way to explain what we're gonna stop?
Just in our general review, we thought, location at the high school, right near the existing special education wing, that would be the best location. It's just a better fit overall, so we can kinda segregate and have its own entrance, exact that kind of thing.
Off to the end of the building, near the parking lot, almost.
Right, right. It's actually part of, we'd extend slightly off of the 500 classroom wing, extend that. That's what was the best fit for now.
So there's really a lot of possibility that we could use...
I'm sorry?
So we're gonna build something new versus what we have? We're not like reconstructing what we have?
No, this would be a completely new area.
And then with regards to the paving, understand the bus garage specifically, and I guess maybe for Rick or Brian, relative to being in a project versus a repair, can you talk about the extent of the repair work that is required and why it would be a capital project versus just somebody thinking paving would be routine maintenance?
All right. I guess the main brunt of it was, any, any section of paving, just a real quick recap, I think everybody's aware, but if we only resurface or grind down and resurface the paving, we get no aid. So that was, that's the main brunt of it. Going a complete rebuild, we get the maximum amount of aid. But in general, with the size of our parking lots and the use, it's very difficult to do anything within our budget, especially with the $20,000, you know, kinda cap without going out to bid, to public bid. We can do very little for $20,000 a year, which really just patching and paving. If you, it's what we've been doing the last five years for the transportation. We can come close to that number and barely make a dent in what needs to be done. By the time we're done finishing that work, there's more needs to be done, so it's very difficult to keep up with it.
Also, without that full tear-out, in essence, tear-out and start over, doing it the right way for the traffic that's there, every couple of years, we'd be in the same boat.
Thank you. So, the roof got me thinking about this. I mean, like what we do with the buses, where we take and we essentially schedule out the upgrades. I mean, a huge portion of this is, you know, kinda fundamental, like maintenance and infrastructure. I mean, does it make sense to, I know that we try to do it from a budgetary perspective, that we try not, we try to have these capital programs on a schedule, but would it make sense to have, kinda leading into that process, a section that we look, we know that we need to do, I don't know, 12% or 15% of the roofs, and we know that we need to do this based on life cycle? I mean, is that kinda the process that has historically been done? Is it something we wanna go towards? Is it...
I would love to do that process, but unfortunately, we're kinda stuck with what people have done 20 and 25 years ago. They did massive sections. So, you know, coming forward, and now that they're aging out at 25 and 30 years, it's very difficult to just pick off.
You're kinda forced into their schedule more or less.
Yeah, right. In some cases, we're lucky, where you do get more life out of one roof than another, whether it's the manufacturer or just the installation process. Sometimes you do get a really long life cycle, and you can leave those and, you know, hit other ones. But in general, you're kinda stuck with what they've done in the past 20 years, just, just the way it is.
That's a really good question, man. The building conditions survey does identify the portions of the roof that are completely at end of life, and they are the ones that are in this particular project.
Right. Thanks.
So Jason will take you on ahead.
Okay, I guess Rick thought that I was no stranger to non-consensus, so... He felt it would be appropriate for me to, to talk here. So, one area where there was not consensus was the sports center. This is essentially a new locker room that would be built, and then the old locker room that's used for football currently would be converted to storage area. So, there were some benefits that were seen. There's a need for storage in the school. We have, you know, items that are misplaced and in some cases now in front of fire exits and things that was brought up in the committee. But, the new facility, another pro of it would be that it could service more teams. We would have room for the track teams, lacrosse, as well as football team. And the current area is seen as too old to rehabilitate, to, you know, suggested that we just rehab the existing area to make it a new locker room facility, replace the lockers and upgrade the bathrooms or showers, but it's too old to do that. Some of the, the concerns that the committee had were that the project is well over $2 million, and the last capital project that was done had a focus on athletics. So, it was seen that if we, a sports center was proposed, there may be people with other interests that would object to putting more money into athletics at this time. So the next one that was, there was much discussion on in the committee, was the secure visitor areas in each of the buildings, so reconfiguring the entrances to the building. This is one thing that came from the committee that met last year on building safety. And some of the benefits would be securing the rooms to make the door monitor safe. There's a sense, you know, people in favor said there'd be just a peace of mind of doing something to address security. And the door monitor would have time to sound an alarm if there were an emergency. The cons, you know, people dissenting, wondered if it was a true deterrent to plan violence. The people that would be out to hurt children would not likely walk through the secure area to get into the buildings. They would find another way to get in. And again, the cost was well over $2 million. From the, the teachers' representation, you know, they said that many teachers were asked, and they did not feel that this was an important thing to do in the buildings. They didn't feel that that would make them more safe. So, those are things that were discussed about the, that secure area. Expanding air conditioning is one thing that, you know, especially the teachers were, were interested in seeing. You know, the, to create a better learning environment for the students, I think is, you know, is certainly a consideration. That's the, the mission of the school, is to educate our children. And it would, without question, create a better environment for those, those weeks that it's needed in September and in June. So it's, it would also possibly allow, you know, more to be done during the summer in our schools. It would, it would make a better environment for that. The costs for the entire district could run up to $25 million, and we have not had engineering done on that at this time, so we don't really know the true costs of it. And putting one or $2 million into it wouldn't really make a dent in that. And I'm sure there would be much debate over which areas to prioritize in terms of the air conditioning. And it's not seen as a necessity in our climate area for those people who oppose it. There, there are times when we've all been in the buildings that they are hot and they're not comfortable to be in, every year during the Spectrum concert, for instance. But, it's, it's a large cost and considered maybe a luxury at this point with, with all of the other needs that the buildings have. So some of the other items, there are over $15 million of additional maintenance items from the building condition survey that were not high enough priority at this time, that they would be absolute needs. Some of the enhancements that were considered too costly would be, some people have asked for a second gym at Ledge View, the only elementary school without a second gym, wash bay at the transportation facility, window replacements at several of the buildings, reconfiguring the high school driveway entrance for convenience during drop-off and, and pickup times. And there were many other items that were on that list as well. So it's not easy to get 13 people to agree on anything, so, you know, everyone's opinions were considered in the recommendations that we brought forth. So we discussed if it should be one proposition or two propositions, how much is too much to ask of the community. Is the building entrance, again, area reconfiguration a true deterrent to, to violence? And how high a priority is the sports center? Should enhancements such as air conditioning or a gym be included in a needed maintenance project? So, the basic recommendation of the committee was the buildings are valued at $300 million, and the main capital needs are always on the agenda. So the board should consider a capital project that coincides with the old debt dropping off so that there's a, essentially no net increase in the, in the tax rate. If we don't do it at this time, taxes will go down, then when you put a new project in, the taxes go up and, and that can raise red flags with people and maybe cause additional dissent that might not be necessary if we just replace an, an issue that's falling off of the schedule. So the final recommendation of our committee was a project of approximately $26 million, which is a couple million dollars over the, the project that will be falling off in a couple of years, but it was felt that that wasn't too much to ask. The amount of difference wasn't that significant. But that did allow us to go beyond the building condition survey with a family support center and some of the upgrades to the auditorium and the security window films. I think the, you're doing something that the students will, well, this is maybe editorializing my opinion on it, but doing something the students get to see and touch and, and experience goes beyond a roof, goes beyond paving, you know, that was some of the auditorium upgrades. And the family support center, again, it's a, it's something that addresses mental health issues. I think that is a security issue as well. If we take care of the mental health needs of students, that helps the security of the buildings maybe more than security entrances would. So, that was the recommendation that we have. And if you have any questions, Brian will be happy to answer them.
I have a question, Brian. How much would a wash bay be for the transportation area? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What would the cost be for a wash bay for the transportation area?
Right now, I believe we budgeted that at $175,000, if I remember off. I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately.
What do you currently do? How do you currently handle that?
Currently, we, it's, well, it's part of the problem why our parking lot up there is deteriorating, but we wash them outside and the water goes where it goes. It's really just right out in front of the building. We have no engineered drainage for that particular portion, so...
It's basically the same.
Yeah.
So wouldn't it make sense to put the proper drainage in and make, finish the project totally if we're gonna do it all? Wouldn't it make sense to...
I have lots of ideas. But yeah, that's, the wash bay itself was actually a, you'd make a kind of a dedicated little space for it, whether or not it's fully enclosed or not, you know, the E C has a lot of regulations require around it, so...
I know when we went out and visited, they did say, they were, they said that's part of the reason why the concrete, or the, there's problems, 'cause the water and the drainage problem.
Right.
So would be better drainage just with the new pavement also?
So that was gonna be the question I would ask, is with the recer, well, tear-down and then rebuild of the parking lot, we, if we did not look to add something like that to the, this project, would you be able to address some drainage, water runoff with...
Definitely. I think we're, we got a plan to improve the overall drainage, so, you know, I think we should, we should be able to do something, you know, at least to make it so it's not as damaging moving forward.
We're not like just cutting a corner to save a few dollars. That's the main question. Like, I mean, if you're gonna tear everything out and start over, you might as well do it the right way, right? I mean, if that is needed, so we don't run into this problem 10 years from now and all starts...
Deteriorating again. Yeah, right.
My concern is that we spend a million dollars every year for buses, and we really need a way to be able to properly maintain them. I mean, when we went out there, we were told that in the wintertime, because of the way the lot is, the actual buses freeze to the ground and they literally have to be towed out before they can be used. So it definitely is something that's necessary.
Yeah, definitely. The, the entire area is relatively flat, so it's, like we said before, it was designed for somebody else. They clearly didn't, didn't put in the idea of proper drainage, so we're kinda, you know, cleaning up the mess that was made before we even bought it.
I think you're preaching to the choir on that one.
Yeah. I agree.
I have just a question on the sports locker room. How is it determined which sports were going to have a locker room?
For the, the proposed new addition?
Right.
I think, the initial piece of it was that, you know, it was, we're just gonna replace what was there, which right now is primarily the boys' locker room, but I think as we worked it out, we're gonna try to do it so it's boys and girls, 'cause obviously the girls' locker rooms are the same size as the boys currently are. So that was something we were trying to satisfy everybody. Not sure exactly what the final design would be, but that was the initial thought. As far as...
I mean, not that we're going the route, I didn't know what route we're going, but as far as speaking from experience, I have a son who plays baseball, and there are 60-plus baseball players at this high school who each carry around two $450 bats, plus catcher's equipment, of which most kids are carrying $1,000 worth of equipment to school every day, and there's nowhere for them to lock them up or store them. There's some in the equipment, there's some in guidance, there's some in teachers' classrooms. So I just feel like, was it thought of, I mean, I see track and field on here, I mean, I know there's a track and field equipment, but is there, you know, I'm not picking on that sport, but like, you know, they're wearing sneakers and shorts and clothes. Is there a place where baseball players would be able to lock up their stuff?
I don't believe we directly addressed that, but you know, having another separate, well, attached locker room would probably help. I imagine you talk to the coaches, it probably would definitely help, but I don't think we've specifically addressed where they would lock their stuff up. But I do see your point, I do see the, the bags piled up in the regular locker room during this sport season, so. Can't say exactly, but that's something we could try to look at if it is included.
Building on that, with regards to the, the sports center, as well as the entrances, obviously big ticket items. Appreciate the diverse perspectives, I'm sure that existed in the discussions. I know you only had a short period of time to meet, but how, were there other levels of, of project considered? You touched on it with the athletics briefly, but obviously we had an initial design for what the entrances would be, and they're costly. We talked about potentially the shatterproof film as an option, but, you know, I mean, are we at two ends of the spectrum? Do we, do we debate anything in the middle? Was there other options considered?
I think a lot of the concern with people felt was, does it really stop an event such that we're all trying to avoid? And for me, personally, and, and going forward for this board to consider, is the, the entrances, yes, if someone really wants to get into the building, they're gonna get into the building, but at the very least, the person and the way that they get in by the buzzer system, Clarence Center has a hallway. There's no way to really buzz people in. There are, it's, every building is different, and I think... Every building is different and I think that we do need to have a place where they hold in place before they get moved on. And that needs to be consistent in each of the buildings. You know, whether that really in effect changes anything or stops anybody with a motive really to do the worst-case scenario, but even, you know, the not worst-case scenario, it should be secure enough so that each building has a secure...you know, you get buzzed in, you hold until it's determined that you are a person that's supposed to be in the building and then buzzed in, and that is inconsistent in the building. The other part of the, you know, discussion, of course, is if someone really wants to get in, they're going to get in and they're not going to go to that door anyway. So that's the ongoing question that needs to be asked. What can we do without making it inaccessible or that we could spend the whole budget on securing the buildings?
You know, Mike, I would say that the conversations in the debate were less about trying to knock down something than to say...
Make the right decision.
Like redoing the music thing is, on a priority level, more important right now than redoing the entryways. It was that kind of conversation and discussion rather than going backward. But, you know, and there were...there was good debate and good discussion and people threw their opinions out. And there's still...there's people on the committee who believe that the entrances are an important thing. It was getting to that number of twenty-six million is the other issue. I mean, and this will be the big thing for the board to decide is, do you want to go any higher than...I mean, the twenty-six million is actually a couple million bucks over the actual debt fall off, right, Rick? You know, and we figured if we put money in from...if we contribute from the unappropriated fund balance, that's one way to knock that down. The other way...the way we had it figured, it was about fifteen bucks a year on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house, to go that far. And everybody was, okay, that sounds pretty marketable. That sounds like something that we can get out there and sell to the community. Anything higher than that, you know, that's where we run the risk. That was a lot of the debate.
Also, as we move forward, now projecting a couple of years in advance, so we're very conservative with assessments and things like that, so maybe twenty-six million may fall exactly in line as assessments, you know, with the debt that falls off.
You asked if there was any middle ground that was considered and, you know, there were...there was talk about, you know, maybe enhancement to the cameras that are used outside the school. You know, I think as, you know, as Mary Ellen was speaking, I thought, you know, the procedures of allowing people in, you know, and maybe looking at the security procedures of, you know, who is admitted to the buildings? Do they have to be approved beforehand to go in the buildings? Or are they just showing up with a identification and going in? Those are some things that, I mean, especially like the enhancements to the camera system and things, that might be a middle ground along with the window films as options perhaps that would satisfy, you know, make things more secure.
And I think when we talked about the window films, we said we could do that at every entrance. So it wouldn't just be a main entrance, it would be every entrance in the building that would at least be a stop. Like, that was something that we think all agree would be at least something that would work. I know when we were talking, like, at the high school, you know, there's many people who go in the back, so there's so many entrances and in every school they have that. I know I mentioned, like, Mary Ellen did on Clarence Center, that's the Clarence Center and then in the front of the high school are the only two places where you walk in and there's not even another doorway that you could kind of block. So like, there's really no someone. You walk in and there's nothing to just go...you just go off to the side. You have to make a point to walk over to the desk to be locked in, at least here you're letting in front of that desk, but there's no way even there is a secondary entrance. Right, there's no place to stop you, so.
I think historically, a lot of the school shootings are done by students. And students are walking into the school, not going through a security entrance, and so, you know, that was one of the considerations. I know Rick brought up, you're more likely to be struck by lightning than you are to be shot in a school, but we're not afraid of being struck by lightning as we walk around every day. So I think we didn't really...in the committee, we didn't really hear kind of reasons for doing it. You know, we didn't have much information on, you know, what this is...what...how this has improved security in other areas. Maybe you got more of that from the committee, Building Security Committee last year. But in our committee, we really didn't have many good reasons for it. So I think that maybe that would have swayed people in favor of it, but we didn't have a lot of information.
Have we talked to, like, law enforcement and asked...and the safety people that...and asked them, like, is this what we should be doing? Or do you know of other schools that have, like, implemented this system and it's actually...
So if you go to Ledge Park and two other districts, they have secured entrances in a lot of their buildings. Now, some of them might have had it prior to events of the last couple of years. Some of them might have been able to retrofit very easily. You know, ours are difficult to retrofit on our own. And if you do them in a project, they certainly will save money. We haven't really gone to law enforcement to see if the configuration that we drafted out makes any sense to that.
I would recommend that the board seek input from law enforcement or people that have more information than we did as a committee.
Right.
So changing gears a little bit with the air conditioning, I know we're talking about replacing the H V A C units on the roof. Has there...I know that at least some of the challenges when you're talking about the kind of evolution of an H V A C system is the ducting is never where you want it to be and the balancing isn't done, all that kind of stuff. I mean, is that kind of work what would be considered to be part of the expansion of the air conditioning? Or is it just more air handlers and just more ducts? Or is it just...I guess what I'm wondering is how much, if anything, can we do to just improve on what we've already got? Or is that exercise almost as costly as just, you know, building or...
I guess with the existing systems, I know one thing that has been effective, you know, with, like you just said, we find a lot of flaws in the original designs or ductwork. We changed our layouts and it's no longer effective through retrocommissioning. We also have done several small, you know, things in-house to address things like that. So you can do that to a degree. For the building itself, when we talked to the engineers and the estimators, you know, they kind of said, well, what do you guys want to do? Do you guys want to start over and, you know, do a big chiller plant? Or you guys looking to piecemeal, you know, your way to air conditioning in every room? So that's...that was the way...the costs can vary greatly with what you're trying to do. Some buildings we can easily retrofit to individual units for each individual room, you know. And a building like the high school or middle school, you get into a bigger problem where you need a chiller plant, which is the most cost-effective, you know, and then your costs escalate because of just labor to install it. We looked at it in a lot of different directions, a lot of different ways. You know, what we have exist, you know, currently in the project is just replacing in kind with what's there. The units are approaching twenty years old, some are already twenty-two years old, so we will, if needed, redesign the ductwork. So they always...engineers always look at that stuff, whether or not, you know, because obviously design criteria change, you know, over the years, so. We looked at a lot of different avenues, it's just, it's all expensive.
It's all expensive. Thank you. Any other questions? You know, I think that at the end of the day, it's really all about how much are we going to spend? Because everything benefits somebody. And they're all good ideas, but we don't have seventy-five million dollars to do a...I wish we did. But, you know, it would cost forty-five million just to do everything that was on the building condition surveys. So we just...we can't do everything. We can do some things. And this is the tough part for the board, is all the considerations you need to make. So Trish, you had a good idea. It was already brought up by the committee. We will go through...we asked our S R Os, but we will go through law enforcement proper with the sheriffs and the troopers to get their opinion on the secured entrances. Anything else you can think of? Just email me or Rick.
The architects can come back in and look and see if there's a way to have a secure or a hold-in-place area without costing two million dollars.
Right. We'll ask their opinion. Anything else you think of, get to us. And, you know, our timeline is a little bit tight if we want to make a first week of December public vote. We really have...July is just about it, right, Rick? Okay? So thanks very much to the committee. Thanks very much to Jason and Chris. Greatly appreciate it.
Chris, Jason, Keith, thank you very much for all your work.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. X. Brings us to the finances, Mr. Mancruso.
Sure. The first item that we have are bids for the cafeterias. I did mention at one of the last meetings where we expanded some of the coolers and freezers. We've got dishwashing systems at Ledge View and Clarence Center. And then we have the serving line basically at the high school. I gave you some additional information on that. Last time that was looked at or remodeled was when we did it in nineteen ninety-nine. And just as a reminder, the food service fund is self-sufficient, has nothing to do with taxpayer money. What we charge for lunches and state aid are basically the only revenues that come in. And efficiency of operations allow us to have accumulated the funds needed to do these Next item, we have requests from Ledge View to install a, we'll call it a pavilion, something similar to the Sheridan Hill one, where it's an outdoor covered space. In the packet that I gave you, you know, we met with the committee, Brian, Vogel and I did, in March. We gave them some information. They've got a nice proposal sheet. They've got a list of uses that they would develop for that area. And then the last item is their fundraising. And if you see the fundraising, it is in stages. And so what they want to do is fundraise until, I think it was June of twenty twenty-one, and then see where they are with the monies. And if they're only at the twelve-thousand-dollar level, they've got a proposal there for that. If they're at the twenty-four-thousand-dollar level or the thirty-six-thousand-dollar level, they have proposals for that. And then the fifty thousand would be the pavilion. One of the reasons we would ask that the board look at this in the vein of approving it is we need to do legwork for the pavilion. It is pretty much like a capital project for the district. So it has to go through the same state approvals and that would get rolling a little earlier prior to them even knowing if they have the funding in, which is okay because there's really nothing to cancel a project with the state level if in twenty twenty-one, they decide that they've got twelve thousand and they're going to do a much lower project.
Rick, can you explain to me why the pavilion would not be aidable since it's an educational space?
It's not truly an educational space according to New York State. That's number one. Number two, we would have to fund it through taxpayer money, first of all, for it to be aided anyway. Number three, what happens, there's a capacity rating for every building. We can't just build educational spaces indoor/outdoor regardless if the rating of the building is already at the level or above the level of student enrollment and projected student enrollment. So Ledge View is rated capacity, I think, around seven hundred students. So we don't have any projections that would bring us near that. So there'd be no aid, even if it was a classroom attached to the building, regular indoor classroom, we wouldn't receive aid on it. The next item is request that the board accept the petitions from Mr. Boglioli and Ms. Sweeney as far as being candidates for the Board of Education. The next item, we gave you some information at the last board meeting for the BOSI's capital project. BOSI's is asking for a capital project. I gave you some more of the details here for their three centers, Harkness, Canton, and Prior Road. These centers are in the need of repair. I did talk to one of the people in the finance office at BOSI's today. Each of the nine districts that this was presented to already have approved it and the balance to the total of nineteen will happen in May.
And just to clarify, comments from last meeting, because we had very limited notice for this. If we were to vote it down, or one of the remaining ten districts votes it down, they can still move forward. It's just that it's a more costly financing option and we're going to wind up paying more if we vote no.
That's correct.
Okay.
You know, they have a process to do if there's not a unanimous resolution by the nineteen districts. That process is cumbersome, but the buildings are in need of repair, so they will most likely get that process pushed through. But they have to go through the dormitory authority of the state of New York as opposed to potentially independent financing on this.
And just, you know, to be completely clear, we're recommending that the board approve the BOSI's project. It will help our kids. We have close to ninety, ninety-five kids that go to the tech centers every year.
And what winds up being our local share of this?
Our local share over the three years is gross at one-point-four million, but it is aidable, so it's going to be basically a third of that.
So we just talked about our own capital project and some of the money that we're looking at going above what was already, you know, kind of in the original fund. How is the timing potentially going to work out between these? I mean, are we going to potentially kind of hit our head if we decided to take this out of, you know, our existing funds as opposed to, you know, essentially...
Because of the large amount of aid, I still think, and again, that's not a decision to be made tonight, but I still think using our balances will still be the most cost-effective way. Any other way requires then financing and the payment of interest.
Oh, no, I totally agree. My concern is we were also talking about the possibility of using fund balance to cover the expansion on the other side. I just want to make sure that the timelines of those are centered enough.
We think we're pretty good. BOSI's would be a three-year payoff, starting in twenty twenty-one, Rick?
Yes.
So about three hundred grand a year to pay off BOSI's out of the appropriated fund balance. We think we'll still have funds that we can...the board can decide to put towards the proposed capital project.
And that money's aidable, so we'll get that money back next year.
Right. That's really the only way we can take existing fund balance and getting it aidable is through a capital project. So it's always the best way to spend it from our perspective.
The next item is just an information item, but I did put together a basic capital project timeframe that we would need to meet if we are going to look for a December third The last item, we do have piles of old athletic uniforms in the basement. If you take a look at the attached sheet, there's hundreds of old uniforms, really aren't worth hardly anything. And if approved by the board, we would like to have the athletic department work through the teams and offer the uniforms to students for a dollar. Anything that doesn't sell, truly, we would just want to dispose of.
Could be a big hit around Halloween.
Yeah. So that's it for the finance section.
Rick, what is the project aid at? Is it a thirty or fifty-five percent?
I don't know if they've cleaned. That's a good question.
This is a forty or fifty-four. Is it last time I go?
Our BOSI's aid is in the mid-higher fifties. Yes. Yeah, okay.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Mancruso? If none, can I get a motion to approve F one to F four and then F six as well?
So long.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's carry on. Personnel, Dr. Patak.
Thank you, Mr. Pukes. Before you have a number of items, including an addendum this evening, the first is a resignation, requests for leaves of absence for the upcoming school year, first semester, requests for reinstatement to active employment, various appointments, including one regular substitute replacing one of the leaves of absence for next September, academic intervention services, academic support instructors, obedience review instructors. We also have four individuals who are scheduled to earn tenure this coming fall and you reviewed their file. reviewed their files last meeting, and this week, or this month, you had them for approval. And final item is, in addition to the substitute teacher list, and finally the addendum, we have a recommendation for new director of health, physical education, athletics, and Mr. Lemke is in the audience this evening. Lembeck, excuse me.
Do we have any questions for Dr. Patak on instructional? So, you know, can I get a motion to approve P1 to P6, including the addendum for Mr. Lembeck?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Welcome to clients.
Non-instructional personnel, you have a request for an extension of leave of absence appointments, including summer employees in buildings and grounds in the technology department, as well as additions to the substitute list.
Any questions on P7 to P9? Can I get a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Carrie's, Dr. X.
Insofar as special ed, we had a busy month, 26 school age and 14 preschool meetings. It'll be very, very high over the last two months, in excess of 100 for both of those. These are all annual reviews, mostly for kids who are out of district at this point, but they're starting with the elementary here as well.
There's no questions, can I get a motion to approve S1 and S2? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's carry. We have nothing under board development or policies this evening. Brings us to our second public comment session of the evening, if anybody has anything for the good of the group.
I had one thing, I saw in the, I just happened to see it in the mail today from the DePew schools, they had $100,000 that they spend each year on capital improvements that are aided. So it's aided the following year, and it sounded to me like it would be a good idea to take some of the things that come up in between the bigger capital projects that, you know, could, could meet some of those needs. Is that something that's, that's been considered here?
Yes, every year a budget time, gentlemen in the front row here, bugs me about that. It's, the, the only drawback to that is the first year you do the program, you have to put $100,000 in your budget. So that $100,000, you've got to fund somehow. Once you do that, then the effect is basically only a third of that, because we'll get our two-thirds back each year. And there are small projects that fall under certain levels at the state, where a quicker approval ends up happening. And the money gets encumbered, so if it does take even longer, but then the, the aid flows in. So it is a good idea, we would like to start it, but we do need to have a year where we can allocate $100,000 through the rollover process and, and not affect taxes somehow. Typically if we, again, when we did, when I did the quick budget presentation, if our state aid this year came in a little higher than that minimal 30,000 to begin with, and then the extra 100 afterwards for the behavioral specialist, that's when we could have done something like that.
So, I mean, my opinion is that it's something that, you know, I don't like to spend money, but when you're getting aided and then coming in between the projects, you know, we know if there are emergency maintenance issues, we're going to be paying 100% of them, so it just, it seems like a good idea if we could find it somewhere to, to get something like that started.
Something worthwhile to consider.
And then, just from a personal level, you know, I sat on the committee, I tried to represent the views of the committee, and you know, in the public comment, then I can give my views. I think the wash bay is a good idea for the bus garage. If I had a wash bay in my, in my driveway, I'd wash my car a lot more in the winter, and it would probably have less rust on it and last longer if, if I did that. Again, we, we already kind of talked through the, the security part, we didn't really have information from the security side, and I definitely think that would be a good idea to, to get information, but my view was that, you know, the, it's not really going to prevent someone who, who wants to do something. Nobody's going to be walking through security entrances to go to the basketball game, to the football game, to the school musical, so it seems like it would just be that limited time during the day when people are having to be buzzed in anyway, so I, I didn't really see a benefit to that personally. And then in, in terms of the sports center, I thought if, if the need is for storage, then, I know Brian doesn't agree, but I, I thought that having a building that's built for storage, you know, maybe a metal building or something, you could use multiple levels for storage, I know similar things are the mats they use for pole vaulting and things like that. If we designed a building for storage, we might be able to do it more cost-effectively, and we would be able to get more storage out of it, was, was my thought on the issue. I know that it, as the committee, it was said that, you know, we can't renovate the existing area, but I find it personally hard to believe that we couldn't renovate, somehow renovate the existing area to, to make it more, more suitable, if it's, if it's old and decrepit, that, that we might be able to do, still might be able to do something there, that would be less than $2.5 million to, to make that work. So, that's my personal opinions, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So, in our packet, we have a schedule of upcoming meetings and that. I'm going to put a personal plug in for my daughter. Unified basketball game at home Wednesday evening, 5:00 PM in the gym, great event if you can make it. And then we have, obviously, we're, we're hitting the home stretch, and there's a number of events between concerts and recognition ceremonies over the course of May and June. Our next board meeting is June, help me out, I lost it, June 10th, final meeting of the year. And I guess with that, before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I would like to thank Mary Ellen Kloss for stepping back into the ring.
Mr. Pukes, Mary Beth Sweeney is in the audience tonight, and we could recognize her as our new board member, starting the day after the budget vote.
Very good, well, welcome. All right. So with that said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation strategy. Do I have a second? All those in favor? We are adjourned, thank you.